Sure.
Thanks. I'm no, okay, all right, great. Just want to get that off the way. It's all Mike. Okay. It's 6:31, we're all here, so I can call the meeting to order. Do roll call, Carla Pennington Cross.
Yes, I'm here.
Ben Wen.
Here.
Danielle Bailey is here. Tamika Bukovic and Andrew Franklin are excused. And we can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, which Mr. Wen will lead.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, a republic which stands
One nation, united.
on a god, indivisible, with a routine and justice.
Wow. Okay. We're going to move on to just a brief reading of our mission statement and beliefs. Would you like to read the mission statement?
Ah.
Oh, we're, oh, we're reading them aloud.
We stopped doing this for a while.
We are reinstating it.
As a part of the greater Glendale River Hills community, the school district will lead in creating a supportive learning environment to inspire all students to strive for excellence in pursuing a strong academic foundation to succeed in and contribute to the global community.
Okay, and we can read our beliefs, we can just read them in order. So, children are valued. Ben? Want to read the next one?
Here.
Yeah.
Here we are, my friend.
A safe environment with respectful, responsible, and prepared individuals creates the potential for learning success.
Education benefits the individual and society.
Each person has the right to be treated with dignity and respect.
Education is a shared responsibility of student, homeschool, and community.
Change is an opportunity for growth.
Each individual has unique potential to learn.
High expectations, effort, and motivation are essential to learning.
Cooperation, communication, and collaboration strengthen our homeschool and community.
Diversity is an asset.
Ow! All right. Now, moving, sorry. We all spelled that way? Okay. All right, moving on to agenda approval. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Carla Pennington Cross with a motion, Ben with a second. All in favor, votes, voice vote. Aye. We are going to move on to 2A, under new business, approval of donations. Allison, do you want to?
Oh, yeah, I didn't know, I guess Melanie, I didn't know if Melanie was coming, if we're going to make this a big, big, big thing, but, so we have the inclusive van, which was the foundation project last year, and we had some pretty significant donations, a check from the foundation for $10,815.10 and $0.10, and one from PTO for $11,178.26. So it's recommended that the board approve the following donations to support the district's purchase of the inclusive van.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Karen, do you want me to repeat the motions in seconds? Like, okay, just checking. Any discussion?
Sure. Yeah, so I just want to say how amazing this is, that this van happened so quickly. And for me, this is a story of everything that's good in our community, because we wanted a project for the foundation. Anna and Hyday and Allison took it about to teachers and did a survey, so it was very collaborative and inclusive. Within the foundation, it was important to us to have it be accessible, which led to the wheelchair lift, and then Lindsay, in all her glory, went and found a grant that we were able to get, right? Based on that accessibility aspect of the van, which covered most of the cost, right? Like $50,000 odd thousand, so incredible work by Lindsay to get that. And then just the fundraising itself went really quickly. The PTO jumped in, made that amazing run, run-walk event in the spring, just boom! Just, I just love everything about this story, because it's inclusive and it's collaborative, and we really pulled it off, and I want to give Lindsay a major shout out for getting the grant.
When we first talked about it, I think we said it could be two years, three years. So that's pretty good.
Caput, done. I love it. So thank you.
Anything else? Yes, I think this is amazing. Thank you to everybody who put all this hard work in and fundraising. I'm so excited we have this. If there's no further discussion, then we have a motion on the table. I'll do a voice vote, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, 3O. We are going to move on to policy work, the first readings. Is, we're, so there are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. We have six policies that are up for a first reading, so we're going to go one by one. And the first policy is Policy 361. Do I have a motion for this policy?
So I'll move to table this for our next policy workshop.
And... Is there a second?
Then I can talk about what I'm going to do.
Okay, so then, is there a motion? Okay, so, an emotion, just?
I will move to approve it for the first reading.
Do I just leave the motion alone? Thank you for everyone for bearing with me as I...
Yeah, it's dead.
Okay, all right. Any other motions, then?
A motion to approve it on the first reading.
All right, I'll second the motion, and we can do a roll call vote. Oh, sorry. Well, yes, sorry.
I'm already down to take notes.
Discussion, discussion on Policy 361 instructional materials.
The big change I want to make is, not the big change, but it says the extent to which the materials facilitate, sorry, yeah, facilitate the pursuit of personalized learning objectives. I like this, that to say the extent to which materials facilitate explicit instruction and differentiation in the pursuit of meeting the learning objectives for all students.
Can you tell us where you are?
Oh, that is bullet point 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8.
We're on the master policy, right?
This is 361, right? Yeah.
361.1.
Yeah.
Oh, so personalized learning to explicit instruction and differentiation?
Yeah. Yeah, so cross off differentiated, and then explicit instruction and differentiation. In the pursuit of, instead of personalized, just say meeting learning objectives for all students.
Sorry, I just want to make sure I'm looking at the right thing. Which paragraph is it, kind of? Bullet point 7?
1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, number 8.
The extent to which this? Okay. Okay. Did you have any other comments about this policy?
Just... One more. When it says relevant research, I just wanted to say, or, sorry, cognitive psychology.
And which spot is it?
Or you can say relevant research in cognitive psychology.
Can you point that one out? Like, where, which?
Relevant.
First bullet point.
Okay.
And then, oh, sorry.
No, no, finished. I want you to finish.
Well, no, I did say one more thing, and now I'm going to say one more.
Keep going, keep going, okay.
I'm writing it down.
So I do want, it says the extent to which the materials facilitate an appropriate assessment. I would say, just be more specific with formative and summative.
I'm sorry, can you tell me where that one is? I'm just taking...
Sorry, third bullet point.
Thank you.
So cross off an appropriate, and then formative and summative. And then, sorry, I know I said last one, so this is my bullet point one, right? 1, 2, 3, 4, 5.
Last is a relative.
6. So the sixth one, we, I would want it to say the extent to which the materials will actively engage students with the content and encourage their interest in learning the subject area.
And which bullet point is that?
That was number 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6.
6.
Okay.
And that's it, this time.
Okay. Carla, do you have any comments or questions on this particular policy?
Just thoughts. You know, I, it's just hard for me to read something like this, it's just a lot for me to take in. I, you know, have been thinking a lot about equity, and I wonder if it should have some sort of specific equity criteria in there. You know, one of the things we've talked about in equity conversations about this idea of having like a equity checklist against which you assess curriculum and materials. And I don't know if it belongs in here, or if there's some broader provision here that covers it, but I would appreciate you thinking about that, or Jenica, I guess, and the policy committee as we finalize this. And again, I don't know if this is the right place to put it, but I would love to see some sort of community engagement at some level. I think it's there in curriculum. It's not here in instructional materials, and maybe it shouldn't be, I don't know, but that's kind of on my mind as I read this. And then my last thought is that, taking into account that, you know, Ben has some concerns and thoughts he wants to share around this and wants to make sure we have a full discussion, that, I want to be sure that before we bring this back to a regular board meeting for a second reading, that we take it to policy and make sure there's time and space, or to one of our, like, marathon policy sessions, and make sure there's time and space for Ben's thoughts to be heard before we bring it back for the formal second reading.
Did you make the motion? Can you remind me? Did you make the motion?
Yes.
So could we, we, could we, could you accept a friendly amendment to move to approve the first reading and send it to the policy committee? I'm not sure for the discussion.
For further discussion?
I think that's part of the recommendation.
I think we didn't see it. Oh, that's what I'm saying.
Yes.
You'd accept a friendly amendment?
I would accept a friendly amendment.
Okay, all right. And then I just, did you have any more comments or questions? Okay. My question was around the rules. There are no accompanying rules, so are we waiting on Jenica to?
Yeah.
Okay, so those will come at a later time?
Yep, yep.
Okay. Thinking, well, yeah, it'd be interesting to see, will they come to?
Yep, we can bring them to policy.
Okay.
Should we then have the first reading on policy, then?
I don't think we can.
No, we can't, but...
We can change that later.
But we don't actually, we have been approving the rules, so no, but...
Yeah.
We have been approving.
Not exhibits, but rules.
Well, we could bring it back to work. My other, that you may not know, or choose, could be for Jenica or for policy, one or more members of the staff using the materials. I mean, maybe this is a dumb question, why wouldn't we obtain input from all who use the materials? I don't know.
I think that typically, you would do that by committee, looking at like third grade, you're going to have a committee. It's really like, looking at those and having speakers come in, and like, you wouldn't have every single third grade teacher, but you might have representation at different grade levels.
Okay, I was just curious about that. Okay, is there any further discussion on this policy? Then we can do a, why can't I say the word voice? Voice vote on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're going to move through. The next policy, is there a motion on Policy 223, end the rule? Or do we have, yeah, we do have the rule.
That's professional development.
Admin professional develop, I'm sorry, I should say the names. The admin professional, well, professional development opportunities for licensed staff.
So moved.
And I'll second, and discussion, would you like to start, Carla?
I thought all this, I, I thought this was fine, I had no comments.
Ben, do you have any comments? My only, like, question or comment was sort of around the board's involvement with the professional development plan, sort of based on the statutes. It looks like the board shall establish the plan, and then the policy talks about the admin bringing the plan regularly to the board to keep them informed, so I just wondered if we might want to, like, formalize that process, is that part of our board calendar? We're going to annually bring you the professional development plan, like, just would like to get into more of that, like, timeline and a little bit of that process, I think. Maybe, like, add some more specific language through. That was my only comment.
Even as part of the strategic plan, too.
Right. Yeah. Okay, that was my only comment, so if there's no further discussion, I'll take a vote, a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Forgive me. Karen, did we say a motion to approve that first reading and move to policy?
I don't know that.
On 223?
Yeah.
Nope, it just was a motion to...
Move it on to the second reading.
Well, all I said was so moved, so if the recommendation...
Okay, for all of these, I would like to, that's the implication, right? That we're going to move them as a first reading to policy for further discussion, so thank you, okay. Forgive me, my first meeting is...
That's okay.
Sub-president. Okay, moving on to Policy 347, is there a motion to approve this policy as the first reading and move it to the policy committee for further discussion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, Carla seconded, any discussion?
Nope.
I don't have any either. Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, moving on to Policy 330, curriculum development and improvement. Is there a motion to approve this first reading and move it to policy for further discussion?
So moved.
I will second that. And any discussion on Policy 330?
Okay, I have a few.
Okay, why don't you just walk through them, Allison can take her note?
Okay, so I guess the first sentence, I would want it to read something like this, "The major objective of curriculum development is to improve instructional practices and facilitate student achievement and engagement in academic content." Okay, and second paragraph, I would want to cross it all off and then have it read like this. "To the extent consistent with the remainder of this policy, the board delegates responsibility for the development, evaluation, and improvement of the curriculum to staff members of the district. Subject area teachers and administrators will collaborate as needed and at least annually to produce an appropriate curriculum for each subject."
Okay.
Which would be the cycle.
Part of the curriculum. Is that part of the original one that you sent me?
No, this is, this would be the second one.
Okay, okay, got it.
Then number four, when it's, after it says internal and external research, I would want it to say prioritizing research in cognitive psychology. Then the paragraph after five, I would want it to say in partnership with the teachers. And then, I didn't know if this was a thing or not, but just somehow keep the curriculum committee updated with these big, with the changes in curriculum, so I don't know if we had to write that in or not, but, me too.
Anything else?
Yes. Oh, number six, I just want, sorry, so number six on the, what is that, the second page? I would just want to say at the end, when it's demonstrated that technology and computer literacy improve that type of instruction. So we're not just putting it in. And then the paragraph toward, right after number six, at the end, I would just wanted to say something like this, where staff members have the opportunity to appeal curricular changes or inactions. So let's say, you know, a teacher asks for a resource, and, you know, someone said, "No, you know, we can't do that right now," they would have the opportunity then, and so then I would say, "They may bring their appeal to the curriculum committee, and the curriculum committee will determine if it is brought to the full board. The full board in consultation with relevant staff members has the final decision." It doesn't have to be exactly that, but something like that, because...
Would you have a concern with them just using the regular complaint process that we already have set up?
Well, if they're doing curriculum changes, though, they're working directly with district administration, so...
Right, so then it would just go to, so if their concern was with Jenica, then it would start with me if their concern was, do you know what I'm saying? But the first person always has an opportunity to address it in the complaint process, and then if they're not satisfied, it keeps...
Yeah, so we can put district administrator first, then curriculum committee, then board, or maybe we skip the curriculum committee.
Yeah, typically it would be like, right? Okay.
But, yeah, so something like that.
Okay.
And I just, again, the reason I'm bringing this up is because, you know, while it may be working perfectly now, you know, where teachers feel that they have a voice, I do want some, something written in policy for them to, you know, lean back on. So... Especially if they're, you know, they really want a resource, or they think something's going to really improve student outcomes, you know? So anyway, I just think it should be written down. I know that might be the unspoken sort of way it is, where teachers are allowed to advocate for themselves for their classrooms, but I just want something written in policy where it's, you know, it's there.
It's just really clear that they can do a complaint process, if that makes sense.
Carla, do you have any? Thanks, Beth.
No, I, again, I would like you guys, the experts, to ruminate on the equity question, whether there should be a more direct reference to equity issues, to cultural relevance, those kinds of things, you know? Especially as we fight with achievement caps and all that. It's just ruminating in my mind, and again, I don't know if, there's no rule with this one, right? There's just the policy?
There's no rule, Chuck.
I like that right up front, it talks about collaboration or coordination with teachers, but it would, I would like to see in it something that talks about, you know, the criteria. I don't even know quite how to say it. Yeah, I don't know how to say it, but, but I'd like the idea of equity to be in this somewhere, kind of like Ben was thinking about, like, making sure teachers know that they have ways to bring concerns up, but I would like it to be in here. If someone were to read this policy, that we expect our district staff to be thinking about equity as they consider curriculum, you know? I would have to put a lot of thought into it to think about how to say it.
If you think of it, you can let me know. But, yeah, we have some time. Ben, also, I think maybe some of what you're looking for might be addressed by the rules around the textbook selection, like 361, some of those rules is about, like, reconsideration or appeal about materials and resources, so it's possible some of that might be outlined in there. My...
I just want it written in policy, not rules.
Okay, heard. So my K-12 should be K-8, right?
Well, my wondering is because we do collaborate, K-12.
We collaborate with Nick Leary, so, okay, I wasn't sure if that was intentional. And then my, where I want, like, a little bit better understanding, just through the further discussion, would be around the distinction between the board and administration, like, it's the paragraph after the numbers that talks about how curriculum can be sort of manipulated, things can be removed or changed without board approval, that are like, under the guise of something already approved by the board, so it's different hypotheticals have come to mind, like, does that mean that, like, I know we didn't have to approve the human growth and development program, except for like, a, well, a change to it, or whether we were going to put genders together? So I just, I have like, some sort of questions to kind of hash out around, around understanding that better, but other than that, I don't have any issues with this policy. Well, the paragraph after it lists the curriculum items 1 through 6, talks about board makes decisions to add or remove district programs and areas of study, subject to limitations expect, expectations defined in this policy, administration has authority to approve and implement provisions to various curriculum guides created for subject areas, can decide whether particular course class curricular activity are offered in a given trimester term school year, like, not saying anyone would do this, but could you take PE away? I don't know, probably not, because, not because there's state, I know, but like, some, like, something...
Maybe that's part of it, that there's state statutes that...
Right, so I can better understand the law, but just also kind of understanding what, what that, what that means, that's all. Okay. No further discussion, then, is there, I'll take a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on to, there's no number for this policy, it's simply called independent educational evaluation. Is there a motion to approve this as the first reading and move it to policy for further discussion?
So moved.
A second.
Okay, any discussion?
Just needs a number.
Yeah, needs a number.
That's my discussion, then.
Okay.
I haven't seen anything.
All right, I'll take a voice vote, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And move on to the last policy in this group, which is Policy 726, nondiscrimination. Is there a motion to approve this as a first reading and move it to policy for further discussion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? I don't have any either, so I'll take a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That means that all policies that we just considered are being moved to policy for further discussion. I'm going to move on to 2C, policy work board governance, these are second readings. Okay. I would, I would accept a motion to consider these in bulk, so we could move through them if anybody wants to make a motion on the first recommended action.
Yeah, okay, so I move that the board approve Policies 120, 130, 151.2, 153, and 171.1 as revised after our first reading.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? And all of these policies are available on board docs, they're public, it's public content, these are second readings, so the board did our first reading in a special meeting at a policy workshop, and a lot of work and thought has already been sort of put into these, these are policies, board governance policies, right? So, any, do you guys have any discussion on these ones?
Hold on. Oh, yeah, was this the one that had edits?
Did you have it?
These are this, hold on one second, I'm so sorry, I'm just making sure I'm reading the right ones. Second readings, right. I'm good.
Okay, I'll take a roll call vote, Carla Pennington Cross.
Aye.
Ben Wen?
Aye.
Danielle Bailey votes aye, motion passes, 3 to 0. We're going to move on to recommended action two, which are second readings of policies that require us to also vacate a current policy. And I would accept a bulk motion here.
So moved.
So this is to approve the remaining policies?
Yes, Ben's motion would, should I read them?
So some of them we have to replace.
Do you want to read them?
Oh, as it's written there, yeah, a second, sorry.
Okay. Any discussion?
So I had, I noticed some typo edits in Policy 142. It's so confusing right now.
Can you send those to Allison? Are they purely grammatical, or?
They're, they're not content changes, there's just like a misplaced clause that needs to be moved to the right place.
Okay.
I don't think they're anything but grammatical.
Okay, I have, I have one as well in 171.2.
Should we just, how do we do that? Do we send?
I'm fine if you send them.
I think we could just send them to you, because they're not, it's not content, so we can approve it with the caveat of the grammatical edits.
Okay, grammatical edits in 142 and 1...
171.2 is missing the word, the district administrator, and needs a there for a his, her.
142, 171.2.
And in 142, Allison, I'll just tell you here, it's in paragraph three, it's where you added the clauses about when the board president can contact legal counsel.
Got it.
And then just the, the last paragraph, it's just, just grammatical.
Okay.
Needs a verb or just some editing, but I'll...
This was towards the end of our last marathon session, so I'll just send you the edits.
Thank you. So with no further discussion, should I read policies and what they're vacating aloud for you, Karen? You, okay, we're good, okay. Then I will take a roll call vote, Carla Pennington Cross.
Aye.
Ben Wen?
Aye.
Danielle Bailey votes aye, motion passes, 3O. Getting there, folks. One more, 2D, policy deletion, this is a second reading of a policy that it is being recommended to approve deletion of. I, is there a motion?
So moved.
To approve the deletion of this policy?
Yeah, to approve this, I am, to approve the deletion.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, is there, do we?
I think we all know what I'm deleting.
Okay, all right, well, then I will take a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Policy will be deleted. All right. All right, we're moving on to three, consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda containing financials and minutes?
Some move.
Sorry, second.
Okay, all in favor by a voice vote?
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda is approved. Moving on to 4A, discussion. Allison, did you wanna talk about the statewide education conference?
I guess so. Karen said she always puts it in.
Oh, this is just a notice?
Okay, so I believe that you, you're coming in, Tamika?
I'm coming.
Yeah. So that's Milwaukee.
State Education Conference is happening here, January 18th through the 20th, 2023. It's gonna be a blast.
As be, as bow and-
As duh. Okay. Great, let's move on to Equity Committee Facilitator update 4B.
Yep, so just sharing, I put everything in board docs so that it's public. But per the recommendation made a while ago, and then the reestablishment of the Equity Committee, we decided to just bring it back to full board meeting. But we do have a recommendation for the Equity Committee Facilitator. Name's Lori Cooper Stoll, is that how you say it?
That's my guess.
And her proposal is attached, and she is willing to facilitate, looking to facilitate the Equity Committee meetings, as well as some other potential work around policy, collaborating with district administration, thinking about some of the things Carla just said around, looking at our policies with the equity lens. And then I'm hoping to perhaps talk to her about the possibility of supporting our strategic planning focus groups, because it sounds like she's got a lot of great experience, so. That's it.
All right, this is just discussion, so any questions, comments, discussion? Audience?
Is it gonna be online or in person?
She's going to come in person to meetings, to help facilitate those, and then, yeah. Yep, she's willing to travel. She has a daughter in college in Milwaukee. She lives in La Crosse, so it gives her an excuse to visit her daughter.
To spy.
Yeah, so she's like, I'll travel. So, yeah, I'm excited, I'm excited to work with her. I mean, Carla and I made a recommendation as co-chairs, and she has experience as a school board president, so experience with governance will help keep us on track in that, in that way. And a really impressive CV and a lot of experience in different areas of equity and education, so I think-
She'll help us accomplish things.
Yes.
You know, to actually have some deliverables.
Exactly.
Very exciting.
Yes. So, all right, moving on to 4C, school board notice of vacancy. Well, I mean-
Currently sitting this seat, but you're not vacant.
It could be. So I don't, um, is there, do you have to say anything about this? The notice is that my seat is up for reelection in the spring of '23. I plan to run for reelection, so. Let's see, all right. I don't know, can I say that? I'm not campaigning, it's just notice, it's just a notice. Okay, we are moving on to the best part of this meeting. 4D, district update celebrations, which I think is why you all are here. And we're very excited to hear and have you guys.
So with our new technology?
Also, we have new tech? We have new tech, did you notice?
Oh, right, right. I saw this thing. Is that an actual speaker?
Yeah, so watch what you say, it's very close. Yeah, oh my gosh, my, right there.
It's kinda nice though.
That's unfortunate.
That's nice.
It's nice, that's what the view is at home.
Oh, it's, I'm so short, you can only see the top of my head.
I'm gonna start out to like-
It's like I have to think about it.
Okay, well, all right.
It's like candid camera.
So let's celebrate Glendale River School District. I don't know if you wanna introduce?
All right, yes, all right, so, good evening. I am going to kick off this evening's presentation by introducing everyone to Ms. Jess Eiffey, who is a third grade teacher at Parkway Elementary School, but is also in the process of working towards her influence for your students. How exciting!
Yay!
And I have the opportunity and the wonderful privilege to be able to be her mentor this school year. And in an attempt to have her have additional time in front of various people in various capacities while being the school board, we thought it'd be a great idea if she came this evening and had the opportunity to share some exciting things and celebrations related to our district. Please note, as she is sharing, there may be times that Anna and I, as well as Allison and anyone else, jump in around some of the slides that are presented this evening. So having said that, I'm gonna go over to Jess.
I think we have enough treats for everyone here, too.
Well, we've been able to see a lot of in-person celebrations return from their COVID vacation, and it's been really great to see, see them return, introduce them to our new staff, and, and the students who really have not had a chance to do them. So that's been an interesting experience, because they're not noticing things like, oh, I did that when I was little. And so they're all just really excited to share with each other, and the energy's been really great. So one of the early ones that we were able to celebrate supports our PE program, where they kind of work with the students on endurance, and one of our character words of perseverance. And the students, both on two-day span, show and celebrate their hard work with a fun run, where families are welcome to come in to participate with the students or just cheer them on. This year showed the students how we have to be flexible and adapt to situations, because our youngest, our youngest students had to move their celebration indoors due to bad weather. So we still are able to celebrate their hard work, and they had fun running in the halls of school, which is never allowed. So extra celebration there. The second year of the new and improved or revamped Fall Festival, where it's now outside, which I think a lot of families really seem to enjoy the new changes. And it's brought in some new fresh vibes and activities, which has been really fun, and the kids always love to see it and participate. And it gives staff a fun way to participate with them as well.
Our partnership with the Glendale Police Department as part of our work around creating a safe learning environment for our students, and really to kind of work on some of the fears and concerns that our students have around some of the safety protocols that we have, and their burgeoning awareness of their surroundings. We did have the Glendale Police come in and talk with our students the day we did our safety drill around situational awareness, and really talking with students about some, what are some of the safe ways that we could leave or exit or protect ourselves in spaces, and really reassure students about their ability to be active in that and not just passive in terms of a lockdown, which provided a sense of security to students who are kind of always thinking about like, how do I stay safe? And so it was really good and reassuring for them to work with the Glendale Police around that.
This was a very recent event that the entire district took part in, and it was a really exciting part for me to be a part of as a staff member, and the other staff members who came out and participated. We had from Parkway and now a representative from every grade and all of our areas, including our intervention programs and our allied arts, and just being able to share what it is that we're doing and see students have the opportunity to come in and also showcase. There are a lot of students who participated in the sharing of what it is that we're doing. And to just see some former students, have them come back and say hi. It was a really, really fun event.
I loved it.
For our first year, I mean, like, I was, it was an awesome initial kickoff, so.
Yeah, I just loved it. Can I, can I speak? I allow? Yeah, please, okay. I love that both schools celebrated in one building, and I've already told Allison it would be great if, you know, it could go back and forth and celebrate it at both. There were so many wins from it, just the older and younger students being in one space and building kind of more of a sense of one community instead of two, and just lots of hugs all around, all the older students seeing their Parkway teachers. It just had such a great vibe, I loved it.
And I have to study a yearbook and remember all the names, but it was really fun to see them, because we don't get the chance to do that as often, so. Lot of smiles. So individually, there are some school-wide specific celebrations. We have been able to see the return of school-wide morning meetings, which we hold once a month. And this year, they're taking on the tone of our character words. And each month, on the first of the month, they're as close as we can to that date. We are introducing our new word of the month, and a grade level is taking the opportunity to sort of head up that meeting. And by the grade level, I mean the students. So students are participating in the different aspects of the morning meeting and introducing the word in some fashion, whether it be a skit or a chant. And so everybody's getting a chance to do that. We finish with a fun minute to win it activity, where the teachers compete and have lots of fun, and just kind of build up that fun, exciting elementary vibe, where we're all just coming together, so.
The last month, I sent them a video.
Junk in a trunk.
The minute to win it. I had to share it.
Of course, we finish with our, with our Parkway song, which is always the next fun thing to hear everybody sing. So pals, our pal classes have also returned after not being something you're able to do. And this is where an older class will join with a younger class and do just lots of fun activities. We have another day tomorrow planned. So just fun, because then as you, you know, go throughout the year, you see the littles waving to their bigs. It's just a fun experience, and our big kids always love seeing opportunities to lead and, and help mentor little kids, so. This was also a recent celebration we had that roamed the hallways, where we had our K-5 readers showcase some of their favorite books that they've been working hard to practice reading with. And our third grade, second grade, and first grade learners got to line the hallways and chew them on. So they marched around folding up their books in their pajamas, and they were very proud as they took us their books.
I was at that, and it was the cutest thing that happened to me all month, maybe all year. And I was just like, more, more, more. My daughter before was like, guess what tomorrow is? It's the happiest day of my life. A reader celebration, we get to wear pajamas, have our stuffies, and you have to come to school, right? So she loved it, all the parents loved it. Walking out, we were all like, can we do this all, you know? There was a cry for more, it was great, it was amazing. So anyway, thank you for that experience, that was really great.
This is a fun experience that our ECM pals classes had an opportunity to participate in. Pizza-themed sort of celebration, where they rotated through stations that had pizza as the theme, practicing some daily skills, and of course, celebrating with pizza. And families and supporters of them were able to come in and share in that celebration with them, so.
They also fed us.
All right, so taking a look at our Glen Hills Stars of the Week. So each month, we are also focusing on our areas of the Glen Hills Way, which would be respect, responsibility, as well as inclusivity and inclusion. And so we have been looking at having our teachers nominate students every week, and they get a certificate, they get their names up on the board, they're highlighted in their grade level newsletters by their teachers, and it's been super exciting. I had the fun experience today, we went through Stars of the Week. With Mr. Williams was handing out certificates today, and one of the kids was at the table today going, I'm the star of the week, and his friends were like, he's the star of the week! I was like, VIP seating! So it's, it's been really great to have that, and also to have some of our alumni teachers who have been Stars of the Week before in their years here at Glen Hills, share that with their students, and have the Star of the Week pictures up in their classrooms, which is absolutely touching and hilarious. The Glen Hills Band had the opportunity to play the National Anthem at the Admiral's Game on a Friday night. The energy was high, it was really super fun to watch. And one of our students was selected to ride the Zamboni, and around the ice, all the local Glen Hills Band was cheering for him. And it was really terrific. Mrs. Miracle has done a really nice job of making sure that our students are out and playing and just having a wonderful time, making music for other people to enjoy.
And my Nick is loving band this year. Mrs. Miracle has been amazing.
Glen Hills Cross Country had an amazing season. Probably one of our largest after-school activities. It is a sport in which all students, grades four through eight, can participate, so at all levels and all abilities. And we had, you know, students who were placing and students who were coming in last to finish. And I think, Carla, you can attest to this, you were at one of the meets where one of our students was coming in towards the end, and our students who had finished ahead of them waited and ran in with them and encouraged them the whole way coming in. So being able to see our coaches, Mr. Grabowski, Mr. Kaufman, as well as Ms. Lapp, who was a former teacher here, really build that character in students, as well as helping them be physically active was amazing this season. So our scholars at work, so we have a lot of really cool opportunities that have been happening. You see pictured here some of our students who went to the STEM Fair and were participating with Gearbox and learning more about science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. We also have up in the corner, some of our students out in the river over at Clutch Park doing water sample analysis as part of the work that Alitha Morelli and Michelle Young and Matthew Meeple and Jennifer Clark are doing to work on building authentic science learning experiences for students. So there's some really good, interesting work. I think every eighth grader put on waders and got in the water this year, so that's amazing, because I'm sure that's out of the comfort zone. I can think of a few students that's really out of their comfort zone for that, so I'm super proud of them. And then also looking at some of the things that are going on down in Mr. Savajan's room as we're kind of growing our practices around our STEM work here. The next one is mine, you see some pictures of our staff sitting in circles in various spaces. The one in the middle is my favorite, it's our entire staff, our paraprofessionals, our supervisory aides, our teachers, your administrators, all of us are together in the circle, learning how to build communities, learning how to use circles as a place to give students space, ways around their thinking and their feeling, and also building that sense of community for us as a staff. It's been very powerful professional development work that we're seeing used in classrooms throughout. And so lots of fun and excitement as we learn about it as adults, but then also being able to carry that joy over with our students in the classroom.
All right, in this next slide, it's important to note that we as administrators also value continuing our learning. That said, we do have the opportunity to go to statewide conferences to help enhance our own practices. I had the opportunity this year to be able to attend the one for elementary principals, it was in Green Bay. And one of the sessions that I attended was around staff wellness. And the particular focus of the one that I attended was around administrator wellness. But I walked away so empowered that I wanted to come back and be able to share that with Parkway staff and with Anna and Willie, because I thought it was so important that we do something to celebrate all of our wonderful staff as a, as a team. That said, I went and ordered a bunch of books for both of our schools, again, around wellness and the ability to be able to balance both your professional and personal lives, taking time, what strategies staff can implement, to be able to just take some time, to take a moment, step back, reflect. It's okay to take five minutes out of your day to do some deep breathing activities. It's okay to do some yoga postures. It's, it's, it's okay to read books during, you know, your lunch break, your prep, your prep time. Just some way that you feel like you can relax and unwind and be able to be in a calm space. Because what we know to be true is that when we feel good in our inner core, that resonates outside with the students that we're interacting with on a daily basis. And so I, the other piece is, we're trying really hard as an administrative team, when we attend conferences, to come back and model sharing out with the staff so that we feel like we're not only empowering everyone, but as a collective whole, we're moving and growing together. so that we feel like we're not only empowering everyone, but as a collective whole, we're moving and growing together. And so that's one of the expectations when our staff signs up to go to a conference. The expectation is that they come back and they be able to share with their colleagues during a staff meeting kind of the new things that they've learned to help enhance their professional development and their practice. And so I wanted to, to model that. So what I did was I took the information that I learned in Green Bay that was geared towards administrators and I looked at how can we do this for all of the staff, no matter what capacity you're in within the school system? And what does that look like? And so this wall represents, um, an envelope that has every teacher's name on it. And the idea being that you, uh, the title is like, we are thankful for staff shout-outs. The idea being that you're continuously dropping, uh, positive memos in people's envelopes. So going back to old school, you know, we do a lot with technology. And it's fun to get emails, but there is something about running into the staff lounge, having this recreated space where you're able to go and check your envelope and see positive notes from your colleagues about things that they're thankful for related to you and your practices. And so, um, that, that piece is really important. And then carrying over in our grade level team meetings and in, in our, um, larger staff meetings, starting out, um, with either practicing a, a wellness strategy or doing a whole group activity, um, some way to have the staff have some downtime to come together, um, to collaborate and, and to have conversations. But, um, and, and also just saying, hey, we as an administrative team, we value you, the work that you do. And again, we want to help you be able to balance both that personal and professional life, because that is so important.
Well, you're singing my song. You know, Denise Davis and I led a compassion resilience work group last year that I, I wish we could roll out more because it really, that resilience in teachers and administrators is critical. Yeah, thank you for doing that work.
So, um, some of the Fridays that we've had available to us have allowed us to get together more, um, intentionally as staff to focus some learning times on how we can better serve our students, take some of the time that is not built into our school day and just have a minute to be able to hear what our other coworkers and experts in areas have to share with us so that we can take that back, take the day, you know, think about it, how we want to apply it and bring that into our classroom. So it's been great to hear from the other experts within our building and them get to share their crafts with each other and know how many resources we have within our building of experts.
Do you guys have to sit in the tiny chairs all day?
Those are better than the library chairs.
And if they get too loud, okay.
Yeah, okay.
So I just wanted to share this picture partially because I thought it was hilarious. So this was actually taken after the spotlight that evening as everybody was packing up. Ryan had unfortunately gone home because of a lot of sickness in his house. Karen helped facilitate getting Ryan back in the photo with us.
Is that actually that big? My baby.
But just a. Just a huge thank you.
I feel like Mr. Crager and I are the same height.
But just the work that we've done as a team over the, you know, summer and throughout the year, the sale work, the hundred day plan, it's not perfect, we have tons of room to grow. We have fits and starts as a team, but we just keep plugging ahead and we keep trying and we keep working really hard because we all care about kids. So it's just great to know that every single person in that picture has the right reasons for being here.
Um, to wrap things up, we just wanted to make sure that these, these different universities and programs are highlighted as supporting the staff and how, uh, their continued growth as educators and people and whatever avenue they choose to pursue, um, as well as the support of our administration team and you all as the board, um, just encouraging us to go out and seek further education to become the best versions of ourselves we can be and what we can bring back into the classroom. And, um, it's greatly appreciated because not all districts have this and, um, that's a shame. So hoping everybody takes advantage of that at some point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. So, um, if there's, we can move on to visitor participation. Item five A, is there anything happening online? A? Katie? Just kidding. I know, I know. You're not even, a no notepad this time, okay. Oh, okay. Well. There are no visitors who would like to participate, so I will close that visitor participation and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
In less than an hour.
So moved. All in favor, voice vote? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, thank you.
I don't understand what just happened.
I have tons of notes, just policy, so we can bring it all in.
I think that's, that's okay, I kind of feel like that was, that's ideal. I mean, so if we had all five of us here, I would still, I think you could still do it that way, but I think so. One person, one person, one person, one person, what are your comments, questions, suggestions? And then work your way through instead of back and forth and tinkering with it at that first reading.
Because then everybody's here, they.